Good to have you all.
Glad to be here.
Good to see you, have your award. Let us bow out of here for just a moment. Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come and do the business of the county. Ask your blessings on those who are here and those who might be on the way. Ask the Lord, ask your blessing on those who are affected by COVID-19 and epidemic families. Bless us, Father, as a people and as a county. Take care of us and forgive us where we failed you. In your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, you want to go ahead and bring it? You've got the agenda there in front of you and so you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. If we could start off with number five. If Sam, Carol, and Randy with us and Randy Jones, and they're going to help with the discussion on the water and sewer lines. B and B Engineering.
I have the exhibit Johnson over.
Okay, great.
Stated on the desktop.
Yep, pull those up. Sorry, I'm staying right here.
That's true.
Okay, well, I should get that up. First of all, Sam Carroll, C and B Consultants, I'm the company CEO. This is Randy Jones. We're here for two reasons. One, to talk about this water and sewer, the potentials, the cost and such extended waters. Sewer down 360 at the east. Also, too, to put our faces in front of you guys because it's been a while since we've been up here.
Yeah, do share.
Which one would you like first?
Just start with the second slide. First slide, but it's got my notebook.
You just, if you just do the share at the bottom, it should be that desktop one and then you just screen it like, yeah, screen it works. But, yeah.
All right, yeah. So this is just an exhibit showing the waterline extension to the, right near, just back from 153. I can't remember exactly how far it is back from Highway 153. It's about 20,000 feet, almost four miles. Pretty straightforward, we're figuring 12-inch waterline extension. Cost for that, $3.6 million. I think we provided that estimate to you all. There's nothing very complicated about, you know, a line just like that. Any questions on the water part before we get into the sewer, which is much more complex? All right, we'll pull up the next slide. We also asked to, that should be one right by the left. Nope. Yes, that one right there. We also asked approximate cost to extend sewer to the same location as, you know, Highway 360. And that is a much more loaded question. And I want to show you a few reasons why. You see, at the top is a plan view of the route following right along the highway. And below it is a profile. Now, on the left, you're starting at Food Line Shopping Center and then heading east, going towards the Apothamatics River. As you see, you're going down in elevation. But the problem is along 360, it's up, down, up, down, all the way. So you can't just run a gravity line out there and pick it all up and pump it back. If you would go to the next slide. So in not knowing any particular location, anyone had in mind of where you wanted to serve sewer to, just along 360. We looked at the different drainage areas that could be divided up and provide gravity sewer. And each one of these colors is a drainage area that you could install gravity sewer and require a pump station. Pump it back up somehow back to the county's existing system. Go to the wastewater plant. So as you can see, there's quite a few different colors there. Along 360, you've got two, four, six, seven, eight, eight different drainage areas, eight different pump stations. And that gets to be very complex when you're talking, you know, is this, you do one common force main coming back? And then different pump stations running at the same time? How is that affected? If you only have one pump station running, you don't get enough flow, enough velocity to keep force mains scoured. So as I was saying, it's a pretty complex situation. There are some things that we could do, like these areas, as you see, the blue area is the largest one of all of them. That's following, I think it's Wolf's, you know, Wolf's Branch. A gravity line run down Wolf's Branch could pick up quite a, pretty good area. And some of the areas right across on the north side, this area here, that pink and the other green down there. I apologize, it's a little hard to see. Those would probably pump up to 360 and across and into that gravity system to one large pump station down near Highway 153. And then pump that all back to the Bolo pump station or maybe into that common, into the same force main with Bolo. It's hard to say at this point. These other areas, though, would likely just need their separate pump stations, separate force mains, and pumping back to the municipal system. So we wanted to present that to you, show you kind of the complexities involved in running gravity, running sanitary sewer out of 360. If the county has a particular spot in mind, though, we'd always look at just serving that location. I think, and so we did provide just a rough cost to give you something was just a pump station, force main coming all the way from 153. I think it was about $3.4 million. That had no gravity sewer in it for any of these areas. That was just one pump station. So it gets to be very costly, very fast. Any questions on that? And I'll probably do a lot at you at one time.
How many pump stations do we have now? There's been talk for four, but not a lot since I joined about the new, yeah, treatment.
Smacks Creek guy?
Yeah. Does that, how did, like, do you think about an ordering of projects, like?
The, 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 we have a permit for off Cheatham's Road. Which I don't know if you have anything that shows that drainage area or Cheatham's Road wastewater treatment. But that's, they know a lot shorter distance. They don't go all, you know, towards the tree. I don't have anything on that plant.
But I guess.
The comp plant, two, Plant A and Plant B.
And those are above and beyond what Carol was talking about. It puts the second one on, on Smacks Creek down around all that little subdivision behind Redfield South.
Yeah, Plant A is shown on Cheatham's Road and Plant B is shown the one you're talking about.
The one we have the permit for is Cheatham's Road. Both of them are on Smacks Creek.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to do this, spend a lot of money pumping back somewhere that then kind of gets undone or becomes unnecessary in the future. I'm trying to understand what the, you know, what a good ordering of things would be to be the most long-term economical.
I believe the Smacks Creek, these two drainage, yes, these two drainage areas would probably, can probably gravity to the Smacks Creek plant. But all the rest of these still would not. So this, the pump station to cover all this, pumping back up here to Bolo pump station, but then just discharge and head south, going to Smacks Creek instead.
Can you get a permit modification to take your permitted one and put it further downstream to catch all of this? Modification as opposed to a whole new?
Not sure about that. I think it'd be doubtful, but if you were to talk to them, never just relocated the permit. It takes the overhaul of permits to get further down where it'd have less impact on the stream. I don't know about the location.
But we should have the credits for, for the limits. Yeah, the first plant that we could use, the second plant to get, if we don't build the first plant, move further down stream. Right, we would have that loading, move further down. But it may be a whole nother permit.
But even if it's another permit, it seems like that would be better in the end if it ultimately saves, you know, money from having to do so much pumping back. If I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes. So again, I have to look at it and see, but this blew it, the largest of the pump stations. It might have a more direct route, you know, to get to that new area than coming back up through here. But to serve an area like this, you're gonna, no matter what you do with the plants, you're gonna put in gravity sewer to a certain point. It'll just be matter, do you extend that down to your new plant? So what you're, what you'd be wasting, putting in now and that wouldn't be needed is the pump station and force main. And for these areas, it's not a very large area. So you might have a $300,000 pump station and maybe $200,000, $300,000 in force main. Well, it's, oh, no, maybe $100,000 in force main just to get right back over to here. Of course, those numbers don't include whatever improvements we need to do at Bolo pump station where all this is seeping. Depending on what we do, we could either dump into Bolo and it's pumped again, or maybe tie into that force main. And then it's just a normal force main, yeah.
So these two plants that are in our comp plan, if we put those in, does that close down the old one? Is it obsolete it?
I believe the intent of the Smacks Creek plant.
That's what it looks like.
Everything over to that.
The plant that we have now will become a pump station.
Yeah.
Everything that flows there by gravity now will be pumped back over the hill, so to speak, and then gravity flow back to Smacks Creek.
So everything pretty much west of Cheatham's Road would go to Plant A, Cheatham's Road plant, the village and everything else. And all this other stuff, farther along 360 would be Plant B. Is that kind of a name, too? Is that a creek?
Well, it's all in Smacks Creek, but that's just an alternative that was available with the comp plan.
An alternative versus do both? I mean, so it's a, it's a one or the other, not do two plants?
Smacks Creek further down.
Well, it's two different service areas, though.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
But that's what I was gonna say. Either one, you're gonna have to pump, or the other.
So no matter which order, no matter which order we would do this, and we would still have to have force mains and pump stations.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the point I was trying to make earlier that, you know, this will be the only airway you probably wasted the, not wasted, but you wouldn't use those pump stations any longer. Now, you're saying location B, I'm not familiar with that off the top of my head.
It's in the comp plan, it's way out, almost to 153.
Okay.
Down in this area, right about here.
Okay, so that's on a separate watershed. There's a, there's a ridge down through here that this can't get to. So you'd just be pumping over that ridge to get to that plant. So, yeah, we would want to look at that very closely before you spent, you know, the expense on trying to serve this area. You know, which way would that force main go in the future?
One thing to keep in mind is that Nevers Creek Plant is 26 years old. And it's only 300,000 gallon capability at its current status. So depending on how much flow you put into it, that may need an upgrade if you're going 2 million gallons. This 360 quartile.
That's great, because that's, that's still exactly where I'm kind of going with the theory of like, what's the order and what you do? Like, it's not going to make any sense to go and do all of this and then put, you have to upgrade something that you want to then replace. That's what I'm having a hard time laying out in my head is like, what's, what is the, the best long-term look like? I mean, even out 50 years, like, let's, you know, plan really far out. And then back in, you know, what are the order of the steps look like to get us in the, in the right direction? And I get, you may end up in some of that where some of it is throwaway because you just needed to, but you didn't minimize it as much as possible.
So the plant that we have the permit for, that really came about when we, when this development area right through here to Potts' property. Going that way. So when we were looking at expanding all that gravity sewer, go that way and pick up that drainage area. And then I guess the one further down was for more growth towards the 153 area.
And so you would see, I heard that, you would see then which way the growth went and then pick the option that made the most sense based on the growth?
You only want to spend that $50 million safe.
Totally agree, yeah.
I may be talking out of turn here, but another thing I think we should be thinking about is what we're gonna put in to the plant? What do we want the plant to do? Do you want to pick up just commercial? Because it may be a different type. What you're, what you're treating? Are you gonna allow residential to get into it? Like, I believe some sections of Palatine only allow commercial in certain parts of their wastewater system. So.
I don't, I don't think.
We skipped the first stop.
That would only be if there's some type of industries around here that needed a different treatment. Because if you, if you're not careful with that, you're only, you know, gonna have to use separate gravity sewer systems to run off collection. I don't.
But if you were at a, I guess if you were at, if you were trying to make sure you didn't exceed capacity for a while, you could put a limit, you could put a limitation in, something like that. Either you only wanted commercial, you only wanted the residential, right?
You stated the capacity, what's the current usage? I can't remember. 300,000 gallons, what's the current?
Treating them about 100,000 a day.
So we're at a third capacity right now.
Right, what you got, if you remember the study that Randy done for us, it's got to do with loading too. You know, it's not, that permit, it says 300,000 a day, but if your loading is higher, that number could come down if the strength of the waste is, is higher.
Right. Going back to what you were saying, if you, if you put the, used in, at the expense of putting in all this infrastructure, I don't think you would go buy residential homes and say, don't connect.
I wouldn't think so either, but.
You know, that's more revenue for you.
I tend to agree, just.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a case. It would be more, what, what you serve, everything that you're able to serve. Or any, there's some industry come in with some really high wastewater strengths or something, and they just require some type of pre-treatment on their site.
My concern is we talk about figuring out which way the growth goes and then put a new plant in. But the thing is, the growth's not going to come unless we have a new plant. If we can't, if we don't have water and sewer along 360, businesses aren't going to move here.
I agree, and they do go the direction you have it, so you, yeah, you will direct the growth.
So, I mean, maybe we could take a look at just extending it a short distance and target development land that we could procure, either by buying or by locking it up under a first right contract.
So you'd have your long-term plan, but then.
Well, we'd have a shorter term.
Shorter term.
The long-term would be a new plant, but in the short term, we could pump everything back up.
I think you could easily phase that, what you're talking about, okay, you go down. Go down through Bean and Grill. You're gonna want to see that develop. But as soon as you get to Chula Junction, you're gonna run into a 300-acre Martin Marietta that's never gonna develop. Phasing does make sense to us.
Do they own the land all the way to 360 or does somebody else own that strip? I thought.
They own about 70 acres from this office.
Did they?
That's gonna stay agriculture, because they're not gonna let anybody get near their plant because they don't want to hear anybody bellyache.
Nor do we, so that's probably good, yeah. Well, so when you talked about going by the residents, and I agree with your logic on that, but I just want to pick up that a little bit more. So when you talk about running it down 360, and then like you've got these colors that go back pretty far off. I mean, do we then decide at all along 360, how far off the sides we go? I mean, there's, there's very few homes that are like right there on three, you know, right on 360 to go into it. Particularly if you take like that Chula, you know, like that giant Chula section that you have there.
So what, what this has done, back up a slide, forward and backwards.
Must be Redfield subdivision.
Well, but he said what he told me, you colored not residential areas, you colored based on drain. Right, okay, I'm sorry, let me make sure.
Yeah, because at the corner, Chula 604.
This is good. No, I think this work. So let's take this area, for example, and hopefully you'll be able to see it. This blue line here, that's a stream. This is topographic now. And so for this drainage area, you've got a stream coming from this direction right there and a stream coming from that direction right there. So that's the point we were taking, figuring, you know, what to serve along here, put a pump station and pump up. Now, if you didn't want to do that and you wanted to focus more right along 360, you get more into that up and down. So you've got now a drainage area here and another one here. You're taking what was one pump station and turn it into two. And that's the case kind of all the way down here. So take this big, long, blue stretch here, that's following Wolf's Branch, which is a good ways away from 360. It's about 2,000 feet back up here. But if we wanted to look at just, you know, say within the first 500 feet of 360, that's, you know, you've got one drainage area, another, another. There's, that's four, five, it just keeps adding up, you know. And so that would be, you know, you're almost looking at each business having their own pump station. But that's, that's not a good thing. You've got a bunch of small pump stations pumping into a common force main because you can never count on them running enough to hit what we call scour velocity to keep the force main cleaned out. Same time, if they do all run at the same time, well, then you've got issues, one pushing back on another. Do they have enough capacity? Just a bad situation to be in.
All right, so somehow I've not asked my question correctly, because that's not, that's not the path that I want to go down. So, no, it's my, I think it's my fault with the question. So wherever you're talking about carrying the lines, whether it's right along 360 or it's coming off at any point, you've got the main line that you're bringing through. How far off of that do you, how do you choose how far off to go to a house? Like, if the house is a mile off, do we say we connect to them? But if they're two miles, that's too far? How, I don't understand if it.
The other one.
In this, even if we went with the original thing that you, that you projected, it went down to 153, what kind of coverage area are residents gonna actually see, like, that they would benefit from?
All right, so what, what we're trying to do too is look at it just from gravity flow. What can we start following the streams? But also, this, this is your county GIS map and you ran the tax parcels on here. So a lot of these parcels along here are long and deep. So if we ran a gravity sewer along the bottom here, that would provide service to their property. Now, if they, if you had a house up here, yes, that is a long ways to go to get to a house. Typically, though, you're just responsible for getting the sewer to the property and the developer on the property would tie into it. So.
That's what'll determine how valuable the property is for someone.
How close it comes.
Right, how close it comes.
So how often, if we do follow that route there, one large trunk, say, coming through here, how often do we come back up the 360? Do we come up a line and then run down a little ways?
Okay.
Oh, that's.
That's where I'm going, that's where I'm going, yeah. Because that seems very variable, right? Like, that could have a lot to do with your costs, even if you're, even if you had a pump station, it's a lot more line to build.
Absolutely.
Drop the pipe in the lowest point and then everybody uphill can just, in theory, hook to it.
If they have legal access to.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, yeah, provide it in the lowest point and have, you know, but then you're gonna have properties like this here. You know, it doesn't have legal access to it here. So is that where the county extends a line up, sets a manhole? You know, those are.
Because we can, because if I'm, like, you can basically do it through eminent domain, right? But that's, we can push the line up there where they, they don't have a choice as an individual? Is that the difference?
Well, I don't, well, two things. One, you know, I don't think you'd spend the money to serve a lot that the individual doesn't want sewer to be.
Completely agree, yeah.
But where that does come into play and say, well, this lot wants sewer and this is how we need to extend sewer up here, this property owner doesn't want to give an easement. That's where eminent, eminent domain would come in.
Thank you.
When we were working the Redfield South subdivision, we actually have sewer easements down in the bottom where Wolf's Branch goes. Because somebody in their infinite wisdom said, this is how this would have to work. So as things like that happen, you do touch bases with folks and say, hey, what if, if we get those easements during those seasons?
And that's right there in the corner, I think. That looks like Loblaw they drive.
Yeah.
So it would all work out.
I apologize, I'm not familiar with the names, but I remember, I think we just.
Well, yeah, you can see that.
Right there.
Yeah, and you can see the Martin Marietta.
Yeah, now, my, I focused on just 360. This is the strength, you could easily pick up more to, to the next ridge. If the next ridge is Butler's Road, all this could be served in that same gravity sewer. I just didn't.
That would be nice. That, that picks up a lot more potential homes and land.
Same, same situation, though, you know, the, this lot comes all the way to the back. You know, they could pick up, but these lots are somehow alive and need to be extended up to them. So you can.
It's a long way for a business on 360 to connect, though.
I agree. Yeah, we'd have to run up and T as well. One of the things we were hoping to get some feedback on is, because this is so large and there's so many options and lots of money, is, is there a focus point? Is there a particular stretch, a little bit more in particular? Maybe we want to try to focus all with that sewer, so.
That's something we have to discuss.
Yeah.
I'd send you the comp plan.
Do you think you have a?
It basically picks up everything for the heaviest development, 360. Smacks Creek.
Yeah, I like that idea too, not necessarily pushing it all the way down to 153 now. Although current housing, current housing, you've, you've got more on the other side of 360 than you do on this, this portion here, it seems like. Which is why I kind of liked you bringing it down to Butler's because, but.
Yeah, so all this.
Right.
That gives us quite a bit on 360.
Yeah.
Think, you know, the problem you might have trying to serve existing subdivisions is one, do the residents even want it? You know, if they're not having a bill, they pay to put in the drain bills and things, so. It might be, plus, it's gonna be more expensive to try to put it, the line in through somebody's backyard. Versus new, newer planning, and so a new subdivision, when it, you know, occurs, can then take the option of connecting it.
Thank you, that's a great, that's a great point. Yeah, that clarifies my thinking a bit.
Trying to come up through this dense neighborhood, I mean, the, the installation cost alone is probably gonna be easily three times as much. Going through up those houses, the driveways. To connect people up to get.
That's good advice. Yeah, no, that's really good, thank you.
But.
Yeah, right.
Sure you all know, certainly better than I do, that I think the county is only gonna continue to grow. You're only gonna get more subdivisions. You're only going to get more subdivisions.
Yeah, although I, I don't think in general we're trying to encourage subdivisions. We're, which is probably why, and then to help answer your question, I mean, what we're really trying to do is encourage commercial growth to increase the tax, the tax base off of the residence. So maybe that needs to be part of our thinking about the direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which pushes it back more, like you said, you know, that closer to three sixty.
Yep.
Than coming off as much.
Yeah, to that, so here's the scenario. Say, uh, Bojangles or something comes in on that lot and the sewer is down here. And as long as the two thousand feet, you're probably looking, um, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a gravity sewer to run that off. As compared to onsite sewer system, drainage system to treat, uh, restaurant strength wastewater. That's going to be about a hundred, a hundred and fifty grand all by itself. And they're going to have to have an, um, not an operator, but, uh, somebody come by and check on it periodically. An engineer certified to it once a year, big expenses. So if you got, you're driving commercial, they'll pay the money to connect them to the gravity sewer. You get the trunk line and then you can provide the easements or you can get the easements to get up to those lots when you need to.
Yeah, to the first ridge, but the second ridge, that's twice as far.
Well, yeah.
Well, I'm only looking. Stick with that first ridge you're talking about, then that's probably okay.
Yeah, that's where you were drawing, when you said about the first ridge, you're coming on, on the three sixty side up there. Yeah.
He was pointing down below the quarry before, uh, I don't know where Butler's Road, I think it is.
Yeah, no, but I agree, I think, yeah, but that was because of something I asked, so I think, yeah, you're back up like you said at the first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, this will be again, if you had that trunk made in and the business came in here, same scenario, just getting from here to there.
That gravity work would, I, I don't know the topography well enough, that works.
I'm pretty sure that the ridge is along the road here and all this is sloping that way, all this is sloping that way, that's why the string.
Okay, yeah. That seems like the most logical, okay.
Nature's design, yeah.
It just designed for sewers.
Which way, which way does that pink area at the top slope away from three sixty or it does?
Yeah, that's, yeah, three sixty is, is the ridge line. The only exception is right in here, the ridge comes over a little bit. So these lots can be served by this pump station here. It's like a sewer line come up and bore under the road.
Gravity.
Yeah, gravity.
Yeah.
Can get tied into it. But at this point, it's all sloping, I think, yeah, there's the string coming back this way. So you'd have a pump station right there, you know, pick all this up.
The arithmetic curve is not far from where Sam's finger was there.
Right.
Because it curves back, like.
Same, this one, that pond, that, the tree line right there, that's following the string. That's where it is right there. We just, that's a small area, we just put that in there to end the, end of the study area.
That's it, is that that dairy farm here, that green area?
Yes.
It looks like it.
Okay.
Obby's old place. Then don't get the.
In this color, it's hard to see, but that's outlined right there. There's a string coming this way, pump station there.
And where does it go to right now, the center of the food line?
Uh, so food line, you can see my little green lines here. Food line all drains to the Bolo Pump Station right there, um.
But where does water and sewer end, right at food line?
Yeah, right at food line.
Sewer's in the back of the water.
And water loops around food line.
Can we get coffee?
Uh, yeah, you guys have, um.
They emailed us today.
Not to us, right, you mean?
They've emailed them so we could put them up on there. I can.
Put them on right now.
Well, then they, and then they need to be online with the meeting materials from today. So what, what do you, what, what do we need next? I mean, we just pondered this a bit, we. There's something we can do that helps you move it along further.
To me, this gives us a perfect roadmap for where we have to go acquire some properties or lock them up somehow. For sites that we can attract people to. You got to gauge that interest before we even go off, start spending money.
Particularly probably from here to Butler's Road at least.
But I mean, how, how are you going to gauge interest on that? I mean, like I said, we're not targeting residents, you're talking future commercial that's not here already. So if the point was to build it and that attracts, how will you find that interest at this point?
By talking to some of these larger parcel landlords and see if they're interested in selling.
The price is right.
I mean, this, this basically gives us a limited area. What's that bright green area that, why is it, are the trees included in that or are they, does it go around them for some reason? The lime green area up there?
The, uh, the gawns look, 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 look great on the prints, but for some reason.
Okay, so it is solid, it is solid areas.
Yes, yeah, so the, the trees are included, you've kind of got to look around it. And it just, it did not take well.
Okay.
Over that for some reason. Yeah, when you print them out, they print out well, it's just for some reason on the screens.
I mean, Taylor already probably knows, but I'd like to sit down with a GIS map and look at who all the property owners are and see what, see where to go from here.
And to sell for, for putting the sewer line in or to sell for business park?
To sell for business development. If we can find a company that wants to move in and they need fifty acres, is a fifty acre landowner ready to sell if the price is X.
How much land is, is currently available in the sewer system like up from food line towards the courthouse? Is that something we could try to entice people there where we already got to, to get something going? It may help fund some of this?
Yeah, within the existing water and sewer area, I'm sure there's some.
If we had an economic developer and or an active EDA, we have neither. So we are, it's a great question. We are basically totally beholden to people just proactively coming out to us. Because we don't reach out as a county.
I think the biggest problem there is that most of that reaches, you're reaching into the village at that point. And people in the village are not going to want.
That's true.
Industrial development, you know.
And we do have space.
There's a lot of land.
Yeah, if you look on the far left, where you're talking about, you know, behind food line, that is the current industrial park, which we do have space in there. And there is discussion, but it's, it's the same thing. We don't really market the industrial park. We just wait for people to come ask us about land. I'm not agreeing with that, to be clear.
But this gives.
They like. Yeah, so the question is, yes, we do, there is, there is some stuff within the existing area that we can go after.
But this gives, gives us a tool to work with.
Yeah.
I don't think it's practi, I don't think it's practical though to buy land and not plan to immediately extend the sewer.
Buying it, just like, for instance, that property we have down.
That's making.
What?
That's making, pair up a seller with.
Yeah, but getting it under a first right refusal contract.
That's fine, that doesn't change.
If we get a buyer, they have to sell it.
Right.
I'm not talking about the county buying.
That's fine, it doesn't change my point, so let me finish it. Is if the, at the point someone's wanting to come in and buy the land from us or from the property owner, it doesn't matter. They are not going to want to wait for us to develop sewer line, sewer and water lines and then build it. What business is going to want to come and say, I'm ready to buy land and three years later, I'm going to be happy that you did?
Yeah, but, and that's the point I made earlier, but.
And I agree with that.
If we target twelve properties along that area and we go to all twelve landowners and they say, bug off, I'm not interested at all.
Then there's no need to.
And we know we're not, we're not going to put water and sewer in there because it's no way you're going to hook up to it.
Right.
We have no idea what that interest is right now.
But how much does it increase the value of the land when you drop water and sewer in it?
So that's, that's where, that's what I feel like.
Thing, I mean, no one wants to wait till it's there because then their land value goes up.
Correct. So no matter what they say, it's, by the time you put it in, it will have changed the value to the point their decision will be ten percent. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going. Tell.
I get it.
If this is the comprehensive plan and we've agreed this is the plan, then to what degree are we going back and asking individual landowners? What do you want to do? I mean, maybe they go, I don't like your plan. Well, then what was the point in developing it if we didn't say this is the growth for the county? I don't want to be in a position where we're reliant on just a couple landowners to decide what the future of the county is. I mean, I agreed with your earlier point too, and you said, go back to this. It's one of those, if you build it, they'll come, and that's not a guarantee, let me be clear, I'm not naive about that.
They would.
Whoever's coming, whoever's coming will come to where the water and sewer is more likely than somewhere else.
Always the first question.
Correct.
If you don't build it, you'll never get anything.
Exactly right. So I don't see, I don't personally, I'm not saying don't talk to them, I'm just saying, I don't think that should be our defining factor.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the game.
I think we, it sounds like what I heard was we need to give you clearer direction about where to target so that you could develop a more precise set of estimates. Because you had a reasonably precise set on water, but you had this huge range on sewer. We need to give you more clear directions so that you can start narrowing down options for us, is what I was hearing.
That would, that would be ideal. Uh, I, I, I'll tell you this, of course, it's always the chicken and egg thing. But if you're looking, strongly considering. Uh, spending this kind of infrastructure, capital cost and not have any customers right now, you're going to float that for a while. So let's focus on an area that is prime for development. Let's not, I, I don't think.
And then if we can look.
I think we need to focus on, focus on an area.
We've got it.
No, make it down. We can do some preliminary, uh, design, get some better costs nailed down, even be able to give you, uh, some schedules, how long it'll take to design, construct. Uh, and what might be ideal is, uh, to go ahead and pay for the design. And you have, uh, and get the, to get the permits, you have all that approved, that you're six to eight months ahead of time. Most of this work, you're probably looking at about a twelve month construction time. You know, other than some small one acre developments like a restaurant or something like that, fast food, they go in pretty quick. A lot of construction, it's going to take about twelve months.
And I think if you can bring it down to twelve months, I think that's much, that's much more reasonable, I completely agree.
So when you don't, you know, you, if you tell them, well, we don't have sewer to here, but here are the plans, here's our schedule. You know, so when you start building or say you want to commit, we'll commit and we can have it done.
Really good.
I like that.
All right, that's the majority of verbally said we like that approach, so.
I think that purple block right there is our best. If you want to call it purple.
Magenta.
Up to Butler's ready, right there. Because a lot of that property is already commercial through there anyway. Advertised for sale right now.
Right, what else do we need to?
Nothing for them tonight.
What, what, what I recommend is if you all decide that this is the block you want to look at, let us study it a little bit, look into the geography, look at, what, what is the potential for it? And, you know, you know, might be, you know, half covered in wetlands. Uh, you know, let's, let's confirm that, yes, this does look like a good, uh, good area. And then, you know, we move forward with that and we can figure out what do we take?
How does it?
To serve it.
How does the railroad affect on the north side? That limit, we can go under the railroad on the food?
Yes, we can get it.
Yeah, although mostly saying that the gravity is not going to cover up there in a lot of places anyway, is that what I'm understanding?
Um, yeah, so the, the railroad is kind of, is following three sixty, it's basically on the ridge. Uh, so what's going to happen is all this area would be gravity flow back to a pump station, back to a pump station. And we cross it one time with enforcement reach. We, we just want to limit the amount of crossings. What, which railroad is that?
Norfolk Southern.
Okay, they both, Norfolk Southern and CSX, about every two years, they change who's in charge of the permitting. So it goes from nothing to fifty thousand dollars, uh, and then it flip flops. Or, or just the permit, the, the bore underneath it, so. So you just want to minimize the amount of crossings, but not restricted by.
All right, so does the support we just told you, does that give you what you need to start with the next portion that you just described? Or what do you need? Like, we're not very good about closing out and actually getting action, so.
I understand, that's why we have everybody here, let's do so. Um, if. If that's, you know, the board's decision is to focus on maybe this purple area here, that, that's what we'll do. But we'll be happy to take a look at all of them and kind of give you our two cents too. Where, but I think it's, it's property, property owners and does it look like they're never going to sell? Like I heard mentioned about some property down three sixty. You know, that's, that's a decision that, you know, you guys might want to make, like, let's not waste our time right now focusing on those areas, but.
What we say.
Focus on Butler's Road West on both sides.
Right, Butler's Road West. I like that.
I mean, I would say depending on the, the, um, topography, because that land just on the other side of Butler's Road is all zone commercial already, I think, right?
Western.
Yeah, that big one plot past your magenta. See that big?
So if all of that could fall back with your purple zone, I, I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is maybe include it as far as you could cut it, if, if that makes sense.
It, it, it pretty much is already cut. Now, not to say that if you had to build, you know, we probably couldn't get it over.
That's, okay, that's my question, because that little corner right there has already been zoned and.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, like if, if, again, if somebody were to put something here and we weren't serving this area, we could find a way to get it back over and served in there. But, uh, you, you can't go with so far.
Right, right. All right.
Right.
Thank you.
So what, what did we just approve them to do? Go off and more make a detailed plan?
So.
And how much is that going to cost?
Oh, did you already close it out? So, uh, what, what I understand we're going to do is look at the purple area on, well, both east and west of Butler's Road, focus on that area. Uh, one, uh, see if that property does look developable. We'll check, uh, you know, look at the topo maps, see if there's any like really steep, you know, drop offs or anything. Uh, national wetland inventory map, see if any, you know, wetlands or streams in the middle of it. That would tell us, let's not waste any more time going down this path or not. Well, that checks out well, then we'll lay out some gravity sewer bills, serve those lots there and figure out how we're going to pump that back. And then figure out the cost estimates for that. So you had a little bit more direction to go there. All the work we've been doing for this now has just been, it's been hourly, uh, you know, it's.
Coming out of, talking out of what, Taylor? Or Carl, what, what's mine on the budget that come out of?
We haven't seen a bill on this one, have we?
Might not, actually no. Yeah, we did it so quickly, we just did it on the business development. The water extension literally took us an hour to figure out that it's caused.
I, I think it should come out of the EDA budget.
All right, too. Yes.
Okay.
EDA budget or economic development budget?
Will we pay it off?
I thought the, my item.
The EDA budget, EDA budget's got the five hundred thousand dollars and, and is that what is coming out of or is coming out? The EDA budget, IDA budget's got the $500,000 and is that what is coming out of, or is it coming out of the economic development on this guy?
Well, that's their, you're talking about their checking balance. I'm, we're talk, we're talking about their budgeted amount spent, not just how much is sitting.
We're not spending money on an economic development director. We could use that money.
Well, but we do have economic development lot of budget items. I mean, yeah, it falls under EDA from a group, from a grouping, but we're not spending what's in their checking here per se. We're spending what's in the budgeted amount for the year.
And then we reimburse it from the bank account.
Cool.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
What kind of timeframe do you think? You can, you can have this.
Thirty days.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
Golf cart.
I'm not starting until he's back.
Maybe you did too. Just some of the stuff that Rebecca sent over.
I have disappointing news, so I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Sounds like fun to me.
A lot of no add it just in case.
I can start a business.
It's not you.
Golf cart.
Okay. Um, Joseph wants to wait.
Yeah, I'm not starting before David's back. Now, why is item number four on here? We've already, this stuff's taken that off several times.
This goes back and forth, I think.
Guess we can just kill.
We can always, we can always scratch it right now. That's fine.
I mean, who asked for it to be on it? But that person is about to make the decision. Not me. Did you ask? There no, that's, that's what typically happens with those meetings. So. All right. So no one, David, we were just saying, no one asked for topic four to be on the agenda. So we're planning to skip it because there's nothing to discuss.
Golf cart.
Very frustrating. Yeah. So before, before I joined the board, when I was campaigning as well as several times this year, people have asked about the ability to drive either golf courts, golf carts and/or UTVs on a combination of either in subdivisions or in some of the smaller um, roads in the village. We got a, as a board, we got a specific request. No, I'm sorry. Came into me because it was my, I'm sorry. Thank you. It came, uh, specific request from citizens in Redfield came in um, and it was routed over to me because that's my district. Okay. Um, the residents of Redfield who are interested in specifically for, starting with their neighborhood, to be able to allow golf cart usage on the public roads.
Redfield South or?
South, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, thanks. I was like.
Yeah, it was someone on Law Lawley.
Yeah. Um, although I've also heard from other ones, I've heard from two other subdivisions since then. So the other Redfield as well as down at Amelia's, um, must wind up too long. Thank you. Oak Springs. There's a lot of people interested in that in both of them. So we went down a path, uh, working with Rebecca Worley from VDOT, who you all know. Um, and for a little while that sounded very promising. She was giving us what, um, she can pass around, but I'm going to tell you why I don't think that's necessary because if there's a lot of rules and regulations, not surprising. Um, but the gist of it all comes down to, they will only approve it if it's for the purpose of getting from one place to another. So for example, if you had a golf course and for some reason, the best way to get from one section of the golf course to the other, crossed over one of the state maintained roads, you could get permission and that could go. And so she calls it an origin and a destination. To just loop through any given subdivision or just through, you know, even though like as a resident, you might say, my purpose is to get from this house to that. That's not what, what she's going to consider an origin and a destination. We went down, the next path was, well, in Southwest Virginia, there are multiple towns where this is legal. And it doesn't seem to be necessarily the origin. And so it's part of what's called spearhead trails. It's very highly marketed uh, for tourism. That's what people would actually go there, just like in West Virginia to ride their UTVs. Uh, two issues came up with that. So the first one is they have more authority because all of those are incorporated towns. And they're not actually, even though the public doesn't really know any different, they're not actually VDOT maintained roads. They're town maintained. And so they don't have to follow VDOT. Even in a couple of those cases where they are going under VDOT, it meets that original origin and destination. So it's like from this campground to this trail system or trail system to trail system. And so those work. I'm pretty disappointed in this because I know, again, there's, I feel like there's pretty strong interest in this from citizens, but I cannot at this point find a workable way with VDOT to proceed. Um, the other alternative, I think if some people talk about, well, they've seen this subdivision or that one in other counties, not here, have them. Those in all cases we found were not state maintained or VDOT maintained. They were privately owned roads by that subdivision. Um, so you know, a subdivision could be built in Amelia that they were private roads by the, you know, HOA or the builder kept and maintained them. That would be perfectly fine. Um, but once they're turned over to the state, which has a lot of advantages, as we all know, then we're following the VDOT rules.
So you did away with private road subdivisions in 2005.
Right. But I've just, I'm just explaining why people can see them in other places. Um, so I will keep talking to her. Um, but having the number of people that asked me, I definitely wanted to bring it up. And when I brought it up and asked for it on the agenda originally, I was a little more optimistic. Since then, pretty well squashed. I will keep talking to Rebecca and, uh, and pursue if there's any viable thing to pursue, but I'm, I'm really not seeing it.
What is the problems with VDOT? Is it, is it based on authority, like as far as police can stop you or they can't? I mean, is that?
I didn't find a good reason.
I mean, what I mean, cause I mean, our governor wants to go green and electric golf carts is the best way to go green. So we had to be able to get a, a, a green grant and push golf carts in our county. I mean, yeah. But, but I mean, like they're not tearing up the road. They hardly weigh anything. Is it just the, the matter of police being able to stop you being on a state road or not being able to stop you?
Well, it was just, they have definite, so for, let me be clear, I'm on your side on this. Silly, but I don't, so I can't really argue this point because, but I think from what I see, it's really just the definition of a, a legal road vehicle. So it doesn't meet the definition of a legal road vehicle. So you're making an exception and their process for exceptions is so compli- complicated and includes the criteria already around this origin and destination thing that you don't seem to find much way around it. I, I'm not going to let it completely die. So I'm happy to take that approach and talk to Rebecca a little bit more.
What are the requirements as far as safety? Would that be a way to go?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Second sheet on this list, there's about 30 requirements you have to have for it. I mean, there is, there's quite a few.
I don't guess, I don't guess.
You do have to have the little like things.
You'd have to have that, you'd have to have that also, I think. Um, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to make VDOT mad, but VDOT doesn't come out and write tickets. You know, I mean, I'm trying to undermine somebody's authority, but if our local police are not going to write your ticket for driving your golf cart to your neighbor's house.
The state police can.
State police will probably be driving their golf carts back.
Well, I will tell you, the Redfield South, part of their, part of their um, request was because um, they have gotten some flack from law enforcement. I'm going to leave it at that. So my point is to bring it up. I mean, I did, I'm not asking for any action. Um, I'm sure it'll, I'm sure it'll show up in the, the paper as well. And then if some of our creative citizens have some ideas of directions for us to pursue, as well as I'll pursue what Mr. Wyatt said, uh, there, then I will keep pushing. I'm not calling it dead, but I need a little different route probably to go to make it move further. So, and I'm happy to talk to you more offline. So I'd love more support on it. So. I, I mean, one of the original reasons it was brought up for people was because of the, the Southwest Virginia piece. Like it is a truly a major tourism component. It attracts a lot of people. And so, oh, and I guess it didn't go down the path because it's kind of moot right now, but uh, Ms. Worley did clarify, we can then tax them however we want. So we could put, we, once allowed by VDOT, we could say, our county rule is you can only do it once they're permitted and we could come up with any number of safety, you know, we need lights or don't, whatever. And we could require a permit, just like we do for automobiles.
Maybe it's something that we need to look at. I mean, we came to ourselves, but on a state level.
Yeah.
Have you ever seen the setups in Florida?
I have.
I mean, they ride golf carts to Walmart.
I have, North Carolina, South Carolina too. In fact, if you look at the general requirements, there are some callouts like town of Colonial Beach. So they have, have gotten state law changes specific to their regions. I didn't mean to cut you off. I just want to give you that example.
If they turned it, if, if VDOT stepped back and, and, and made it a locality thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are, are we going to stop at golf carts or we go go further? Can you clue? UTVs?
Well, I don't know. We're going anywhere yet, but.
I mean, I'd be fine with golf carts because UTVs, you're getting in a whole world now. You got somebody running 80 miles an hour.
Versus 10.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think, I think, and I, I've never seen UTVs riding around in Florida. You know, in their subdivisions, it's, it's specifically golf. I, I think they had, I mean, you know, it's got to be a.
We can set whatever rule. I mean, that's the thing. We can set whatever rules at one at that point. At this point, we can't allow anything.
I think as of right now, the people.
You're going to leave that after.
People that do UTVs do it anyway. You know, I, I, I think this was more applied to the golf cart people because the UTV guys kind of just.
The rules are the same regardless as far as my VDOT's concerned. Um, while we're on that, can I bring up one other real quick VDOT real, but it's VDOT. So it's within that. Um, uh, so you think about the map we were just looking at Butler's Road, we were talking about through there, which um, are my residents as well, cuts through, interweaves with some others. But um, I have a citizen from Butler's Road who is interested in closing that road to through traffic due to complaints about truck traffic coming through. Um, I have a hard time assessing you know, what the, the interest is as a community through there, you know, so a resident wants something, doesn't mean that's what the num, you know, the large number of residents want. It's, and I don't want to base something off of even if five more called me, that doesn't really tell you the full thing.
You're talking about traffic in general or trucks?
Trucks. So he, he would like to deem it a no through traffic, which um, at that point, his concern is trucks. No through traffic doesn't really, doesn't differentiate. VDOT gave, I think, I think you were on this one too a while back, but I thought, no, maybe it was Dave. I'm sorry, David originally. I'm sorry. Uh, VDOT gave us the rules for that. They're fairly complicated. Unlike the other one, there is a clear path. It is a complicated path though. Um, is it possible for us as a county to send surveys to people in a designated area and judge their interest in something? Doesn't mean that needs to be binding necessarily. Cause I think, well, for number one, the board is required if they some VDOT, if we choose to take the action, but again, if we were to even consider anything further, I think it really needs some facts from the neighborhood. Um, so it'd be wonderful if I could work, i- if the board is supportive, that we could work on just a survey of the residents along Butler's and as well as the subdivisions that branch off Butler's. I'm seeking feedback.
Do we have a way to do it?
Are there any roads in the me already? Traffic? I don't know then.
I don't know.
It'd be kind of be a first.
I will admit my theory. I'll, I have, uh, well, I'm going to tell you my theory is I don't think it's going to be popular by the residents, but I also think there's value when we have people ask for something to confirm what the popular opinion is. So I agree with you and I wouldn't say if the majority vote wanted it, that one will call it a if the survey, if survey into the majority wanted it, I wouldn't say that to me, we automatically do it. Then I think we would certainly need to talk about precedent, rules, et cetera. But um, I think it would be informative. I suspect they're not going to want to, but I could be terribly wrong. That's the problem is how do you know to pursue something or not, if you have no idea.
When they say trucks, you're talking about anything from heavy duty trucks.
Heavy duty to move. I mean, if you, you know, if you think about that map we were on, it is a great cut through, honestly, from 150, you know, from 153, 460 or to 360. Um, you know, if you're going.
Whittaker Road is too. That's why I was asking about the presidents, because of dump trucks. Anybody going to the Western Inn or Nodaway?
Yeah.
They, you know.
Yeah.
They go from 360 down Whittaker Road. So I mean, you know, where do you, I mean, I get it, you know, yeah, there's nothing wrong with asking for feedback to see, but.
Yeah.
If we could prove the traffic on these roads and have these roads approved to from, from the tar and gravel to a, you know, as it, as it higher, having a higher traffic flow, have it wind to more of the 609 style. You know, smooth paving versus the tar and gravel, that might help people too.
I talked to Rebecca on that as well. I have no idea what's involved there. All right. I'll take that offline for consideration. I appreciate the thoughts. Thank you.
All right. Now, item number four.
We're skipping.
Number six.
Number six. FY 22, 22 budget process and 21 CIP.
Carlos, Carlos here for any questions, thoughts, feedback?
Yeah, obviously there's nothing really. I wasn't planning on presenting it, but um, I had sent you guys earlier this schedule that I put together for the budget. Um, we had a little online discussion about it. If y'all are good to move forward with it, so am I. Um, but I think at this point, I just need to know what kind of direction you guys, if any, want to give me to pass along to department heads. And attached to this is, is a little example of what you send out to department heads, but typically I fill in the blanks on that budget request FY 22 based on what we've spent in the past and what's budgeted for this year. Um, I'm happy to send it out blank, if you would prefer that. And department heads can just request from, you know, a blank form. But yeah, just some guidance on if you want to set um, anything at this point, I can pass that along.
All right. Well, I'll go then. Okay. So I feel like it's yeah, frustrating folks. Um, so the conversations we've had offline and throughout this, throughout this year's meetings have been that our challenge was in the past that the direction generally was submit your budget requests, keeping it to the barest possible minimum, try to cut costs where you can. And the problem is that's gotten us into the situations like we're in now, uh, which will come up in a few minutes as we talk about public communications as well. And. Of course.
Who, where is your source that you're getting this? Cause I've been here for eight years and that's literally not once ever been communicated. So I just want to know who's telling, is it a department head saying that they've been told this and who told them that? So who, where did they get that from?
Well, I've seen the emails. Um, they're not from you. Probably be best to talk offline about it.
It's frustrating to hear that that's the message that's been communicated. It's not the message that's been.
And I've been standing side by side with Carlos every year. I tell people, Carlos is going to put in your base numbers for your, your insurance and your all the everyday things that come up.
All the everyday things that come up.
I think if you were to look back at the, I think if you look back at the board meetings themselves. The board of supervisors have done, have made that very, have made that clear. I'm not saying it's either of, either of you. I was trying not to name names actually.
And I was hoping to finish what I was saying, but obviously.
I thought I was answering your question.
I didn't ask a question at that point. We're good.
I can definitely reiterate that in the budget letter to please request anything that you. Want and or need. Is that the message we want to send?
I would state it a little bit differently than Joseph did. I don't think that we're actually giving these people the message. I just think that's the general feeling of the departments. And I think that we have not, in the past as a board, set lofty enough goals for people to shoot for. People submit their budgets based on keeping things running, keeping things going, keeping the status quo. Pretty much, because nobody's dreaming. Nobody's reaching for the big, whatever it is we want to do. The thing we got from Parks and Rec the other day, that's the kind of thing we should be talking about. And if that's something we want to do. We have to get the Parks and Rec Department to submit that budget request. Then we either say yes or no. But my feeling is the departments have never had the. Ability to do that because they know what the answer would be. Not that you specifically said to them, don't, don't do anything other than the status quo. I've heard it too from other departments, other people. Why bother? It's not going to get funded.
From what I've observed, everything that's been requested has, has never been denied.
People aren't requesting what they want to move Amelia forward. They're requesting what they need to keep it going.
I think he's right that if you think about the Parks and Rec and they said it in the meeting, in 20 years. Glenn's never had the board of supervisors express an interest in Parks and Rec. Therefore, he's never developed a plan or proposal.
And he's not alone.
He's not alone. Right.
All right. So I guess my question to you is how would you like me to word this year's communication to get that across?
Somehow I think we need to communicate as a board. We've identified four target areas that we want to. Move Amelia forward in. We need to tell people in these four areas. Think big. What is it you want? Not just what you think you can get.
Lack of communication. You know, we, we all saw it in the spring when we asked them to come talk to us and a lot of them. Didn't even know what to say. And I think, I think it's important, and we talked about in the email, that all the department's heads should come talk to the board. I don't care if. You want less money than last year. They should at least come and say why they want less money than last year. I mean, it may, it may be a good reason, but the communication fallout, I think is. I, I was, I was really shocked in the spring when we were trying to force people to talk to us about.
Even our CIP process. We, we say we have X amount of dollars to spend and all the departments can submit what they want and there's these three boxes they can check. It's either critical. I forget what they are. Critical, desirable, or I forget what the three words are, but. Nothing ever gets funded unless it's critical. So people are. They're, they're conditioned to only put in what's critical. So we, we need to identify areas that we want to move ahead more quickly. And free up the departments to give us their plans of what it is they want. And then we can decide. Whether or not we want to fund it.
But even the critical, like when we talk in our next topic about communications, he said even the critical things were submitted. They stopped resubmitting them because they are always told no and punted. And so he stopped, he stopped including the plan. Yeah. So I'm not sure we need to do much more than, than carry along the message of, of the board. I don't want you to write something extremely different. I think the. The openness and the receptivity. And they're talking, the department heads are talking to us regularly. So I think the message is getting out there.
That's interesting. I mean, you know. Having, having been on that Saturday. I was myself and from the company I work, but they just told us to submit my budget. And, and you're free to submit your budget in terms of whatever you, your, your plans are. You, you just got to justify it, but there's nothing wrong with that. Yeah, you got to be justified and so forth, but. Isn't that what? Department heads are being told, have been told in the past, present your budget.
Yes, present what you need.
What you need for, you know. Now, you mean, I've got to, I've got to tell you how to think about what you want to do, you know. And, and bottom line, your, your, the amount that you want, I mean. I'm concerned, you, 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 as that manager or head. Are left to, to think creatively as to what you want to do, you know, that, that I shouldn't have to tell you that.
I, I would challenge the point that they've never been told no or everything's always been funded because. The number of things that have died through CIP because the board never takes. But it's the budget, which I'm at the budget process as a whole, as a whole. Those are where the meaningful things really come from. So maybe, maybe that's a little bit of differentiation is. We're, I, at least me, as we first up, thinking the totality, including CIP. And maybe you're thinking of a specific piece because you have more operations, right? I think a couple of other examples we talked about in the last budget cycle that, that hit in the operational though are. The fact of people thinking about maintenance and just standard replacement that that had to go to CIP. And we talked about in the last cycle, like, we believe that should be part of their operational budgets too. So that's probably a change in thinking for some of them too. And there's got to be a cutoff somewhere, obviously, you know. Scheduled replacement for the water treatment facility is not a, a normal maintenance activity. You know, scheduled replacement for an air conditioner unit, it seems like that should be, you know, normally budgeted into operations. You know, type thing. So, yeah.
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, I've worked for the school system for 14 years. And a lot of times when the school board brought to board, hey, about raises, it was a little bit on that later. And so they got tired of asking because it was always no. And we went, teachers would go to support it and we were always told that.
And, and the board has said no quite a number of times. I mean, even. Several recent board members when they left, I mean, when you state publicly that your pride is the budgets have been reduced year over year. You are conditioning the budget heads. You're conditioning. So I agree totally with Harris. What they should do, but I think they've been conditioned not to. And I think we're trying to change that conditioning. Doesn't mean we're going to fund it all. I mean, no one's saying you're going to fund it all. We need to know what, what, what the options are so we can then prioritize.
The presentations that we've, we've had from various areas thus far and it gives them some nice presentation. Visioning and so forth.
That's good.
That budget ought to reflect some of that. You understand what I'm saying?
Need to set some marks, have some goals to.
Well, we asked them to get creative and they got creative.
They did.
I don't know. I don't know what else you tell them. Act on those actions, you know.
So we have the CIP report.
And I mean, they're, I mean, anybody, I guess, department, they, they, they're welcome to come talk to us at any workshop. If they had specific goals in mind, you know, you could just come talk about them.
Yeah, we've let every, that's a great, I think that's a great point. It's a little bit different too. We've heard some good feedback on that this year.
They don't have to be invited.
Exactly. Is that we have said yes to everybody from the county who's wanted it on the workshop or the regular meeting agenda. And they, and they've said that's a big difference for them because they've frequently been told in the past. I get turned down to be on the agenda. So, yeah, it's a big difference. I'm not naming names in public.
I've never witnessed any of this happen in my eight years of working here, so I'd love.
I don't think you see the meeting agenda requests come through though. I get told no, so I'm confident other people do too. So we have the CIP list. Are we supposed to be doing something with that one tonight though? Or is that just for information? That was passed out.
Yeah, because, well. I mean, we decided we're not doing any CIP this year, basically, because it's not in the budget, other than the things we funded at the last meeting.
Well, we said we would revisit in December. So I get, is that this is so we can be prepared for a December conversation?
But I wanted to, what I wanted to talk about tonight was the whole CIP process in general and the way we approach it. Currently, the letter goes out to the departments and the CIP requests come in, they get racked and stacked by the planning commission. Who doesn't know what it is that we want to do. For economic development, for Parks and Rec, for all the things we've been talking about, they don't have any direction, the planning commission. Yet, yet, I, well, he is. Yeah, so he needs to be replaced.
He can get right back on.
If they don't have, if the planning commission is deciding what CIP comes to us for approval and they have. It, it's like this no circle. There's no input into what it is we want for big things to happen.
Talk to the planning commission to let them know where you stand, Mr. Scott.
No, that's why I'm bringing it up. I think the process needs to be changed. I'm not, I'm not criticizing the planning commission.
And I'm not, not taking it as criticism. What we have doesn't work.
You have a lack of direction.
Exactly. Laura, you got something?
I've been on the capital improvements plan the whole time I've been on the planning commission and. Basically, when it came in, we had a budget at the bottom of the paper. And, and that's what we had to work with. I mean. The library came for a new library. That far exceeded that bottom number that we had to work with. And we really worked hard. To rack them and stack them, that, that every department got something. I mean, we really worked hard at that. And then we had to push some things back, but. I, I, I got, I kind of agree with, we never had any direction.
Having the bottom line number is, is. It's asked backwards. That's not the way we should do it.
And somebody set that number other than the board because, because we don't get it until after. You don't know that as the planning commission.
I think, I think it's always been the landfill money as far as I, as far as I know. You know, some years, some years we only had like, that number was only like 800,000. In the last couple of years, it's been over a million. So we, we had a little more to work with.
But there are other ways to fund things than, than landfill money.
And that goes back to the former boards saying no, even what they, even if the words aren't said. If you, if you put a policy says we'll never fund more than what the landfill pays for. Then you limit automatically the requests that, that come in. Yeah, agreed.
And there, and there were some requests that got funded, well, not. You rephrase it. They got funded through us, the planning commission. I, I'm not sure what the board did. And then it was showing back up in next year. They never fixed the issue. So that, that happened too.
We discussed that too, yeah.
Mr. Whittaker, of the ones that are on the front page we have that are currently funded. Can you tell us just a quick, and just a rough, which ones are done and which ones still are remaining? I know they've already been approved. And so we don't need to. Okay, that's fine. No problem. I remember the Beppel building hadn't started because they were waiting for after elections, for example, but. It, it's okay. Hey, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot for that. I can't see which one you're pointing to. Which one is that?
That was being completed. I don't know about the radio station. That's Ken.
Do you know Ken?
The sprinkler system at the county lot, that's a whole, that's been on there for a long time. And that is pretty much going to take the field out of, the reason it's been on there for a long time is because there's nowhere else to play football or baseball. So you go out there and put sprinkler system in, the whole field needs to be regraded first. So when it was put in for a sprinkler system. Evidently the grade was overlooked. So you, you don't want to put your sprinkler heads in without regrading the field first. So if you regrade the field, you got to play somewhere else for a little while till your field reisets.
So we're delaying, we're delaying improving the facilities for the kids to play sports so that they don't have to have a break in their sports for one year.
Had we been able to see COVID coming, we could have taken.
That would have been, that would have been a good one.
That's why it's been on there for a long time. He's, he's going to have to either play away. Every game for one season because your turf's got to get established back after you regrade.
Does the academy have any facilities that they'd be willing to share?
We don't have another football field in the county.
Nowhere.
There's no other football fields in the.
Mr. Harvey, do you think you could get an update from us from Mr. Wilkerson, Wilkinson, Wilkerson? About like, does he want to then just drop this project for now? Does he want to redo, like? It's funded and we got, we're holding, then we feel like we need a direction. He should be in charge. I mean, he knows what they need.
Other piece of that I think was. The track field might become a football field at some point. So that's.
Yeah, that goes back to their presentation from last month where they had sequencing. So, like, which made, I don't remember what the sequencing was. But I know there was some sequencing. I, I think that, that would be helpful. Like, he might just want to pull this one, you know, even though it's fine, it's approved. You know, pull it and then, and then reorder his, his things. I think, because I think it could be a little bit.
Put the money towards the other field.
No, he won't keep the money.
Rather than making you go through all the, it was my question, so I'm going to change my question. Rather than making you go through and just say the status on all of them right now. Can we, can somebody email us a, a one comprehensive list that says this is the status for each item sometime in the next two weeks?
I'll say all the status of my projects. I can't speak to all of them.
Thank you.
I actually asked for that over a year ago at the board meeting to have a monthly update on all CIP projects at the board every month.
Yeah, I remember.
Definitely determine that that's shown on the CIP expenditure summary?
The cost is, but not the, how far along it is. Is it almost done?
It is hard to, it is hard to interpret just like a, a done or whole, you know, like. Like his, his comments on the sprinkler wouldn't show up in the financial report the same. Like you wouldn't understand. Why is nothing getting spent? You, you're right. You see progress financially, but you don't, you don't get the, the bigger.
That's why I try to include mine in the quarterly. The projects that, that I ask for. I try to update each quarter.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard when it's not in any one place though to get, like, this is a wonderful list here, but then. It just then breaks, like, it makes us have to track it all down. Not that we don't want to do any work, but we're all just part time too.
Sheriff's office is done too, right? Wellhead protection study, is that all part of the Steve Davis property, the wells that we bought? Is that done?
Part of that is done. I'd have to look back to see which ones, which, the wellhead study has not been done. Wellhead studies, when you, we're looking at the. Recharge area around all the production wells and classify them as to what's directly influencing the well. To make sure that an industry or something doesn't come in and impact the use of that well. So that's an in-depth study to, to figure out exactly where the recharge area is for each well.
What's, what are we waiting on to get, to start that then?
We were waiting to get the Davis well to see if that was going to be one to go into. But we can go ahead and get started back on it.
Well, but these we didn't table because these were already, these are already. Well, but these we didn't table because these were already approved. These are already funded. We didn't table any of these. These have money.
It's already allotted.
A lot. I know. I'm looking. I'm not sure I'm using the right term, but I was I'm calling it allotted money already approved. They were a funded project.
Prespent.
Yeah. Oh, that's the word I need. Yeah, encumbered. See, teach me. That's good. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And if they're not, and if we're not going to do them, let's unencumber that money for other things. I don't know if that's a word at all. Unencumber. All right.
So the radio system upgrade, four hundred and eight thousand. That's what you're talking about tonight?
More or less, yes, sir.
But where'd the four hundred and eight thousand come from if now we want to hire a consultant to tell us what it is we need? Is it just a guess?
Part of that was combined with some of the broadband shared towers and stuff. A chunk of that money for towers. Or a tower. And then you're looking at the repeaters that will go on the tower system. And then I think that's where you could actually buy it. We're at a point right now with the radio system that we're going to have to make over the next couple of years, some decisions about power going forward. The the radio system that we have now is based on analog technology. And the best example I can give you to this, y'all are all old enough. You remember the first cell phones we had were analog. And there was a time where you could use analog or digital. And many years ago, the cell phone company said, old stuff's gone. It ain't going to work anymore. You've got to go to digital. The radio technology is moving in that same direction. This money is based on an idea that started about 10 years ago. We tried to keep it updated, but at this point, I would not advocate for spending that money on what.
That's my point because you're asking for a study to figure out what it is we actually need today.
Yes, yes.
To kind of pull the four hundred and eight thousand back, rework it into a study first.
From my point of view, I don't know. I don't know how that.
That's all right. Just talk for yourself. Yeah.
I don't know how that impacts the broadband, the shared facilities piece of that. But for the public safety radio, we need to figure out a direction before we spend any large amounts of money, in my opinion.
I think if I remember, and the four hundred and eight thousand was for the equipment. When the broadband built the towers, they were presented to us the planning commission that that money was sitting there. So when the tower was there, we could buy the equipment and put the repeaters on it. I don't think it included the tower if I'm I may be wrong, but.
But do we know what actual equipment like? Do we have enough of a plan to say?
That they don't avoid it just.
Not now.
All right. So kind of good concept, but didn't have some.
Behind us, we could do it. But that's not the best money spent, in my opinion.
Right.
Do we want to just transition into that? I'm examining having even left on the button on the general because that this is a topic on the. Again, I know the other one.
I think the the high school shelter generator is something that's going to require some more discussion as well since it's got two services up there, two different voltages.
Yes, after after we looked at what was going to pay to provide a generator up there, the money that's there is not going to to fix that issue. We have a meeting scheduled actually next week with the school system and the other players in the sheltering arena to make a decision about where the county should be spending money on a shelter, whether it be the school or maybe something else.
So I think there's a couple. There's at least three on here. Then we've just mentioned are good examples of why I'm happy we approved last month the spending of the feasibility studies because what I think without getting enough information upfront, what happens is we end up in either a two to three year delay while people are waiting for the big money to be funded. But you can't make any progress on figuring out the details. And then once approved, you sit. I mean, this is money that then was approved last year's. But so it's been it's been sitting eighteen months almost in my counter. I just it says to me, I'm more interested going forward and seeing the the CIP requests broken up a little bit smaller, starting with a like we did last month, starting with some feasibility, saying, let's put some money up front, do smart planning, then make a request for what's an informed request. Yeah. And that's not that's not to you personally. Sorry, it's having to make an eye contact, but um that's just my takeaway from now that I guess I'm one of the second cycle of this. So with that, Taylor, would that be a good topic then? I mean, so we said we would revisit CIP in December, once we had a better picture of the money. Would it be a good starting point to not actually look at new CIP necessarily in at the December meeting, but to do a really thorough discussion of the existing funded? Hopefully you can get some, like I said, in two weeks ish, we could get a real quick status, done, done, done. Okay, we're looking at now these five or six remaining. Here's what the problems are. And like really push forward. I hate to start adding more projects in when we have other ones just sitting in the queue. And they're already funded to like pull the money back to reallocate or and then in January, then we could move to the next, which really gets us started into we're close by that point to the next total budget cycle, but we might could move forward some some smaller ones before the next full cycle.
Yep.
And Stephanie, I see you on the line still. I think a big piece of what we need are going to need then in December and January is not just your reports, but your opinion based on your years of experience about like, you know, what is the funding looking like? The reason we paused until December on CIP was we need to understand what the revenue collection is looking like. You don't you don't have to unmute necessarily. Just that's what we need to, I think, be clear about. We don't for these because they're already funded, but yeah. So you you want to turn it over to Kent for the next topic then, or?
Yeah, that's that's that can relate with you. I think I just like that we talked about before. I just thought of bringing it up first. Some of these, you know, we mentioned before, if if we kill some of these like like we were, we talked before, like twenty twenty two ATV and batting cages for parks and rec. The batting cages are terrible and dangerous now. I mean, it's like it's like $400 for a net. Some of those things I think should be, you know, that's, you know, I know. I know they're bigger blanketed things, but those things we could easily prioritize.
I think this whole thing needs to be re.
Basically revamped or rewritten, but but I think that we need to figure out a process to explain to people. It's it's nobody's fault when you don't understand, you know, like, I mean, David brought a point. They're trying to give something to everybody. And I get that. But but, you know, at the same time, you know, do is is ATV about to blow up this year? And and I can verify that the kids need nets. I was thinking about buying them myself personally. That's how bad they are, you know, so which I don't mind doing, but I mean, you know, versus you know, you can pull 500 bucks out of here and say, go ahead and fix this now.
Yeah.
You know, but but the batting cages, ATV, that goes more in that maintenance category. We don't have.
What and Carla, to bring it back to the operations one, I think that's part of what all the departments need to look at is is their maintenance budget? And that's a broad, I realize that may not be a particular lineup, but you know, is that really sufficient for them year after year? Or not? And some of them, I guess, I'm going to bet it is. They're going to be like, maybe even half. I'm going to say, yep, it's perfect. We clearly heard from Parks and Rec last week or last month. It's not for them, you know. But if he pulled that, if Glenn pulled that hundred and thirty thirty three thousand back because of for the sprinklers, then he could move full like we could. We could authorize or remove forward with all those critical things now.
I mean, because they, you know, we heard we heard their list, you know, in person, but.
Yeah. So we don't know who else had, right?
Some of the lights, you know, they're bigger.
We need to revisit this whole thing and look at what's critical, what's truly critical that we should pick it right now. And then focus on our four areas of where we want to improve things and set a new CIP. Yeah, and not necessarily just based on trash money.
I mean.
Some of these things like the parks and rec, some of the parks and rec things we wanted to do may require borrowing some money.
So how do we come up with the future plans? Is this just, you know, these projects back?
I think the form the department filled out had urgent three boxes. I know one was.
You stack them.
Urgent series and. And then they and then they had it in a five year plan and that's.
Right, okay.
The first year is what we went through and then some stuff we pushed to the next year.
I get it. Okay.
To Roger's point about process, I think the process would be a little bit easier to look at if they didn't have to classify them that way. If they could just rank order their things, kind of like Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec did last year. If every last month, if every department came back and said, these are the things in my long term plan. Now, one long term plan might be 20 years like Parks and Rec. Someone else's long term might be five years. Someone else might only two. But as far as they can currently see out, and this is the order in which they need them, then I think we could go through easier and look at like all of the top lines, you know, what actually seems like truly for the county, the higher priority. Yeah, I I don't know. That just seemed so clear when 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 Glenn and team did their order. I don't know. It just made it really easy, it seems like.
Or more more roundtable discussion. They can come and tell us why.
That'd be fine. Yeah.
Because when they're sitting down for you're staring at numbers, right? I mean, nobody.
They come in and see us.
Oh, do they?
But whatever, if we decide that it needs to be communicated to the CIP committee, because I said, that's I explained the direction we've had. So that's what we were trying to see.
Just a portion of the planning commission?
Some portion. I know it was larking to myself.
I I'm not a member of it. I don't want to facilitate.
I think it was three members from the planning commission. Then it was one more, maybe one or two board members.
Oh, okay, good. I was gonna ask my question because so we've got one board representative on the plan. That's you. You're right.
I think I'm automatically on that.
Yeah, I would say, but that could that could be very helpful, kind of like the EDA, if there were two board supervisors members. Whether we call them on the play, it didn't matter, but they at least attended the meetings than they but for the CIP committee. Then they could make sure the communication was flowing a little bit more.
And Larkin was a chair, so definitely communication go through him. That was.
Yeah.
He could he could explain to the whole planning commission, how how this will change.
That's good. He's still in. You tell him to start his topic for.
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Emerson, I think.
I shared with with all of you electronically this proposal.
Yes.
Does everybody have a copy? You need I've got some extra copies if y'all need it.
Nope.
I'm not going to go into this really. It is. We're there now. The technology is changing. The walkie talkies that we all grew up with is basically what the our our public safety is using now. That's not the technology. The current technology, these walkie talkies are basically computers that are in their hands. And we don't have anybody that at least I think, and I've talked to our other agencies, that is truly understanding all the different technologies that are out there to make a decision to move forward. And that's why I propose that we look outside to get some advice for this. I don't like spending money on consultants when we ought to be able to do things ourselves. I I agree with that 100%. But this is one case where I really don't think we have the in-house expertise to move in this direction. And that's why I propose that we we look at somebody from the outside. And there's two ways we can go. We can go totally an independent consultant. They can look at all the technologies around there, but that's going to have a cost associated with it. Or we can approach a current vendor for a less amount of money or maybe at no charge to come in and help do this. But the results that they're going to provide are going to be based on the the technology that that their company can provide. That's we all know that that's going to work.
When I read when I read those two options, my first question was, what have other counties done? Is there nobody out there that has the same issue that's already figured it out that we couldn't just do what they did?
It would be.
Yeah. Even if it's a bigger county, it the concept of what they did, could we take it and scale it down?
Charlotte County right now is doing a $5 million radio upgrade countywide, including the schools. I don't know any details. I just that's what theirs is. My my thought, you know, we were talking about it would be I I don't want to. I don't want to spend the money on a study that we can't do anything for. We we don't. There's no, we have no way to obtain figures right now, and that's what you're asking.
Right.
But if we call Motorola, because that's what we use, I think, right now, and invite them to come to the county, at least they we get in the ballpark. If they would come here for free and give us a quote, at least we have a number.
There's no expectation of using their equipment.
Right, right. Well, I mean.
You would expect it, but no, they promise it.
When we call and ask for fire trucks, they bring them. They don't. I mean, you know, half a million dollars.
That's their sales process.
Yes, I mean, they bring them with cookies, you know, they, you know, they want your business. I don't know that the electronics works the same way, but I mean, that's a big industry. I would think it would.
We we have done that in the past. Once or twice, maybe, Kent. Comtronics does a little. Is it one? I know they did it one time.
Comtronics doesn't, as far as I know, doesn't exist anymore. They were they were bought out. Larger company. I mean, people are still there. The service is still there.
But just just because they're I knew they're doing it right now, we can reach out to Charlotte and say, who are y'all using? You know, and I don't know of anybody local that's had to swap. Chesterfield is continually.
Well, they have they have their own department that runs.
Right.
Let me just make sure I understand. So are you going down a path then of like, can we avoid the consultant cost? Or you're just saying it's a different order of things?
After talking with Ken, I don't know that I don't know that we should avoid it.
I'm not sure either. That's why I was wondering what I'm trying to make sure I understood.
I mean, if 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 they come back with this huge gross figure that we can't afford this year, there's no need to spend that money now for technology that's going to be null and void in two years from now. So we need to get a a number. We need to set a goal. When do we think we can do this? And I mean, when we do it, we got to pull the trigger and do it. I mean, that's otherwise you're going to have piecemeal of a system. And then in three, three years from now, you go to do phase two in two more years and.
Can't build on.
You got to do enough study.
Yes, you'll you'll be starting over again. That's that's how I I take it anyway. That's pretty accurate.
Yes, sir.
From what I see, you know, so I mean, but we don't know the numbers. We don't know what I I know a million needs a couple of towers. I mean, but with newer technology, we may be able to share with the Chesterfield Tower or Palatine. I I don't. I don't know. I don't know the ranges and the increases and stuff. How any of that works, but.
Or share existing towers in the county even, whether it be through the broadband towers or an existing cell tower or something too, right?
You know, does digital have an increased range over analog per se? Not really. Okay, so that's.
I think I'm agreeing and following. I'm just I'll tell you, I'm looking for the and what's the action we do here so that we don't just talk about this again next month. That's what I'm not clear about.
On the mutual aid side, we eventually aren't going to be able to communicate with anybody else if we don't keep.
Yeah. Oh, I read. I'm compelled by what Kent sent.
What is Chesterfield? Y'all have a radio to talk to Amelia? Is that how they usually do it?
Well, I they have that. Then they can do a patch over the digital and I don't.
Get that patch.
I don't know how that patch works.
Like Ken said, at some point. At some point, the companies are going to drop that technology.
Sure.
So when we call Chesterfield Mutual Aid, there will be no communication. I don't know what Palatine is doing currently, but they're probably our two biggest mutual aid providers. And then not away rescue squad. I would say, but.
Palatine is in the middle of a radio system upgrade right now. Lunenburg County, they're not adjacent to us, but I know they are going through a study right now as well.
Yeah, they're all paying these consultants to get it done, so.
I mean, it's it's something we almost can't avoid from emergency services. I think they see in it. I'm sure David. It's going to be unavoidable.
But I think that's the thing.
I'd still like to have some. Still like to have some numbers.
Right, so I think what you're hearing, the three of us who aren't involved in emergency seem compelled, like we're agreeing, it's a problem. It needs to be addressed with.
Yep.
So you don't have to convince us it's a problem. It's the, but literally nail down what's the next step.
Where do we go? I think it has to be inclusive. I think we have to get emergency services, building, school.
Probably works with schools.
I think when we bring the radio in.
It's been all along.
The radio system needs to be.
Let's all make a good fish on it.
The school system has a need. They all should at least be at the table when we're discussing.
Not that we're ever speaking to the school, we may have to speak to our school sometimes. We all.
They can share the network there. The equipment's there. And they can share the, you know, they might, they'll have their own radio frequency. They can still share the equipment for communication, as well as the sheriff's office, that, you know, and the rescue squad.
But like you said a few minutes ago, though, if you know locality that's already doing this, regardless of the size of it, you know.
I mean, can you just put out RFPs then? Because like.
If somebody answers them, that'll at least give us.
Well, they're going to answer because they're selling like crazy.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get a bunch of them. So maybe that's, I don't know. I, I know I missed a committee, but if there's fire, rescue, emergency, schools, we ought to get all those people together and let them come up with the scope for the RFP.
Ken, I mean, we're, we need advice.
My only concern, I, I agree with everything that you said. I agree. My concern is some of the stakeholders, they don't know what they don't know. That makes, that's not double talk. I mean.
No, I know.
We can sit around and talk about our, our needs assessment. What do we need to get the job done? But if you don't know the technology that's out there, you might ignore a need that, that's there because you just think that technologically it can't be done. That's what I hope that this external person would bring to the table that we don't have.
Well, I think you bring up an interesting point with that too. So if we went, and let's just pretend for saying, we said, we're going to copy Powhatan. Well, they came up with their plan probably three years ago, funded it two years ago, implementing now. At the taste technology is moving, that could actually be a bad move too, to fa, to copy, even if it's a currently implementing. I, I'm going with the.
Potentially, yes.
I'm going with the, and you're, you compel me to the consultant route, honestly, because well, it'd be nice to copy somebody. Technology at the pace it moves, you could be copying something unintentionally that's already outdated.
Do we have any idea what a consultant would charge? Maybe that's what we need to study.
That's.
Ten thousand dollars or?
That figure was in the proposal that I presented, and that was based on. The figures that Lunenburg County just did exactly what, what we're talking about. And that was what they ended up paying in that ballpark.
We're trying to pull up the net.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking at something else, because.
Do you remember? Okay, so.
That's what they pay in, in that ballpark.
Okay.
It's a lot of money.
So let's, if we look, go backwards for a second, we look at the capital improvements that's currently funded. Radio system upgrade phase one, we all just agreed a minute ago, pointless to move forward with something that's already funded for $408,000. Pull the 408,000 down to 44,000, you're still going to put money back in the bank for now. Granted, you have to figure out the future. You're going to encumber a lot. We don't really then have to allocate new money for it. It's my, that's where I'm going. It's like.
I just think, I think we need to be committed that when they come up with something, i- if we don't do it, we're going to waste the same money.
Yeah.
Two or three years.
What's the likelihood?
To do it.
What's the likelihood of it being $5 million?
I mean, I have, I have no clue. I have no. I just know. What they told me, so.
At the end of the day, that's probably the, the type of money you're talking about.
Cause we're talking about.
Could be, hopefully it could be phased in, but at the end, at the end of the process.
Everything's new.
If we go with Motorola or Comtronics, we go get Motorola. That, that makes sense. If we go with a third party, it may be X, Y, Z is better. I see, I don't want to spend the money either, but if we, if we go with Motorola, that may have got us where we are today. Just because they come in and they, we, we buy Motorola.
Right.
If we go this route, it may, may open our eyes and it may be something different out there.
What's best for us. Well.
Do you have a consultant in mind?
Me?
Yeah. I mean, do we know?
The consultants that Lunenburg County hired comes very highly recommended.
I guess we would have to RFP for a consultant.
Yes.
So Sean, I think you're right, got a good point. No one's got, none of us are going to want to spend millions. But I don't feel like we, I mean, I get the citizens haven't been able to see this report, and I think we need to make sure the report is in the packet that gets published on the website, it's really clear. But the report is really compelling, and as, as Kent said earlier, this isn't really something we have a lot of choice about. It is a public safety issue and.
We don't want to wait till it breaks.
Yeah, at the point that it, it breaks and we can't communicate with other counties for mutual aid, then we will have done, not just a disservice, but like a literal harm to our citizens. So I, I get your point, but no, I don't know. I don't think it gets, it comes back with five million. You know, they're just going to say, yay, it's five million. But I think we're going to say, how do we make that five million work? Not.
Right.
Not no.
Right.
Previous boards have just said no and ignored it, and they've dumped it in our laps, but.
We, we are, I like the citizens, citizens need to see that, but. I've been in charge of scenes in the, not in the map, but in the upper panel. And I can't communicate to Amelia, which means I can't communicate to the folks that are inside the building.
Yeah.
And that's, that's scary, so.
That, I think because of the timing of the election, you might not have caught his report then. It covers a lot of that really good. So it's why, even though I'm, don't work those things, I felt compelled because it, it made it real to me, exactly like that.
I don't know. We'd literally run and stand on top of a hill to hope to be able to talk to somebody in, in certain places, but.
So can we authorize you spend? I mean, I'm not even sure it's a new spending, but.
Well, we need to get our feet prepared.
Well, yeah, but he's got a 408,000 on a radio system upgrade. Can you proceed then with the existing authorization that we have to say, do an RFP within that to get moving on this?
We're saying yes. Yes, do it.
Absolutely. The great point, dude.
There's a sample RFP that I included with the proposal. Again, I, I didn't make it up. I stole it from somebody else.
Do we don't?
Are you, are you all happy with the wording in that? Do we need to?
I don't know enough to name. What if you worked offline, what if you worked offline with the two board members who have some expertise in that on developing the RFP and then evaluating them?
I'm, I'm fine if, if that works for y'all.
Our expertise is pushing the button and talking.
But in an RFP, but in an RFP, you're going to say what you need to get that. I mean, it's, yeah, what you need.
It's, yeah, what, what's the feedback from them? If, if you all agree with that, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Is that enough to get us covered in the school? Is that, or we just?
It doesn't mention this.
He said the RFP, I think he's looking at the RFP. But Kent, what, what I, where I was going while you're looking at that is, since you already have funding for radio, I don't think you need a vote per se from us. You're just telling us how you intend to proceed with your previously funded money. And you're being very transparent about that and looking around the table, you got full support.
I was looking for schools, but it.
Appreciate that. I, I noticed they're not that purpose.
It's there, Ken.
Okay.
I just, I was looking for the word schools, but it says Board of Education.
And that was just the wording that the other county used.
Yeah.
But it, that, that was absolutely the intent. All of the stakeholders should be involved.
This should be okay.
They may come back and decide, no, everything's fine. We don't want to be, but I think they, they should be invited to the table if they want to.
That's all you, that's all you can do. They've been very, they've been very collaborative in everything this year. So I suspect they'll say they at least want to participate in the study.
I didn't want to blind Dr. Harper, so I've already, I talked to her and, and she was agreeable. Appreciate it being asked.
Thank you.
We, once, the two board members that you asked me to work with, once they approve the RFP, are we ready to release it? Do we need to come back and have a further discussion or do we just want to move forward?
No, do it before.
Okay.
And I'm sure when you, when you get the study back, I'm sure you will come talk to us then about the study, because that'll be our next normal phase to move forward. That's good. Feels like progress.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we wanted to talk about, we're having trouble finding an economic developer and it's kind of died. And we'd like to discuss the possibility with the rest of the board of hiring an assistant county administrator instead. Taylor's always got too much to do. This person could offload him on certain things. He could be the primary interface to the EDA and have a more of an EDA function. And it'd probably be a better use of our county money.
It would get you something, because they could work on, on economic development, but it wouldn't. You know, there's been some people who've raised some concern about going all in on economic developer. That's fair, it's a fair thought process. The money lines would be about the same. It would just change the job duties.
So we'd have to come up with a different job description, post it, recruit, start over.
If you all. However, we got to start over either way, probably, because we're at the, we're at the end of the line on the economic developer position. So, yes, starting over, but I think that's why we're bringing it up. And so let's say we, we, since we're the two board representatives to the EDA, okay, just to be clear where that, where that we is coming from. If, if you got to start over anyway, you might as well make sure you start over in the direction that makes the most sense, based on your learning you've, you've come through.
This direction had worked, so.
But the bottom line is we want the EDA to be more proactive. And without, without an economic developer focus, whether it's a county, assistant county administrator or an ED, it's not going to happen.
It's more flexibility with the assistant county administrator. I mean, it gives Taylor the ability to direct them to lots of different, I mean, if this quarter, if there's one thing that's a higher priority, or next quarter, if something else is a higher priority, he's got that flexibility. Where if he's got someone hired as an economic developer, yeah, you, I mean, you direct them. You, you could change. But the skillset we would have hired for would mean they're probably not very adept at changing to a whole different direction.
County can get more use out of.
Yep.
Yeah, the position.
Do you have?
I think that's a very valid point. I think the fear with the dedicated economic developer would be finding something for that person. Productive in phase forty hours or something. That's been an honest concern a lot, every, probably everybody here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, even those of us who are supportive of it. You're right, everybody has that concern. Yes. Yeah.
So, so let me get you to write up a job description and get posted and. By when?
Well, we've got, I mean, there's got, there's probably some off the shelf ones that, what's the? Faker Tilly, you know.
Maybe go to them.
Yeah. I'm sure it exists.
All right.
There you go.
Takes us through the agenda.
And Carla, just to be clear, we're talking no change in the budget anyway, because it's just shifting the, still, we projected still the same salary range, was what we were thinking.
You, you got what you need and tells them.
Well, that's right. It's going to cost less, because you're right, we haven't.
It's going to cost half of it.
We won't have, it's been budgeted for the whole year. We're already halfway through the year, so. Well, yeah, and that's why we need, I think we need from Stephanie and Carla. Really, where do we look? Where are we, where are we under and overspending? Can we re, can we reallocate some money? It's having even hard years like last year, we ended up with surpluses. I think we're ready to, though.
I've got one thing before we adjourn, if that's all. I've got my appointment for the planning commission. I've got it, got his resume electronically. I've also got the printed copy. I didn't know if I could send that up electronically. How do we handle that?
So it's a little bit informal, but the process we've just kind of been following recently has been sent it to all of us electronic or if you pay per fine too, but we're fine with electronic. And we've said, like, give us at least a week, if not two weeks before, when we need to vote on them, just so that if we want to talk to that person.
Okay.
If we have some questions for you, or just, we wanted to feel like we could make it. When we voted, we made it an informed decision versus just rubber stamping, but that's about as.
I'll send it. Tonight or in the morning.
Am I right? That's, yeah.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, not too structured, other than that.
And as I said, you know, uh, it's nice to have the lettering behind your names and all that good stuff. But I, I have learned, number one, we've got people in this county who may not have those letters. I've seen some ordinary people do some extraordinary things. Keep that in mind. I keep that in mind when I make buys. But, uh, man, it's nice to have the credentials and all that good stuff. I, somebody in my community, one of my, one of my constituents said, man, I would really like to do that, but now you're, you're all changing. Now you're all known for who got, I said, no, 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 no. Be interested, let us know.
Agreed.
Any, any need to, a continued meeting or?
No, no, sir, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. Further discussion on the motion.
Yes. I, I really believe, I said it before, I really think these workshops have been extreme.